Breaking news. Join U.S. this Tuesday, 14, 2023 at the Ware County School Board meeting at 6:00 P.M. Ware County School District. 1301 Bailey Street. Wecross, Georgia, 31501. Two, the general public, including news media outlets. As we demand the removal of the Ware County School Board Chief of Police for failure to perform the duties entrusted to him, and the immediate termination of Officer Kevin H. Parton and Ware Learning Center Principal Anthony Nasworth. Everyone, please share this with your friends and tell your friends to do the same. On September 23rd, 2022, at Ware County Learning Center Latorska Jones, mother of a 16-year-old daughter went to the school to check on an incident concerning how the child. The school principal, Dr. Anthony Nasworth, and the school resource, OFC Kevin H. Parton, fabricated a story stating that Ms. Jones threatened them when in fact they both intentionally lied. OFC Kevin H. Parton willfully falsified an incident report that resulted in Ms. Jones being falsely arrested for a crime she is not guilty of. Also, please listen to the language of the school principal, Dr. Anthony Nasworth, in the video below. See the incident report and video and click the links below. One, incident report. Yuri= earn: SCDS US 6288 A41-684F-3C60-8019-539B1DD 2AF9. Two, video proof she did not threaten them. Video credit to George Boston Rhymes, the ghetto-free press. On November 2nd, 2022, Ms. Jones was coerced, forced, into accepting a plea by her public defender, lie lawyer, W. Franklin Aspenwell Jr., stated, "If you don't accept this plea, then you are going to jail." Complaints are being filed with the State Bar of Georgia for the ineffectiveness of counsel. Ms. Jones is now on two years of probation and has to pay fines, but OFC Kevin H. Parton and Principal Anthony Nasworth are free to repeat this with another child and another mother. Ms. Jones's charges are disturbing public school, disorderly conduct, and terroristic threats and acts. On November 9th, 2022, OFC Kevin H. Parton approached Ms. Jones' 16-year-old daughter and stated, "Your mother is trying to get my job." As a result, the mother filed a warrant application in the Ware County Probate Court before Probate Court Judge Calvin Bennett, who should have rescued himself as requested, and attorney Jeffrey Parker, representing defendant Kevin H. Parton. Parker is also the juvenile judge. Both of these judges have a history of being unfair to people of color. Click the link below and listen to the hearing. Three. OFC Kevin H. Parton records from Sylvester Police Department. Click the link below. Four. On November 28th, 2022, Ms. Jones filed paperwork to withdraw her plea of guilty. State Court Judge Tommy Hatfield has rescued himself from this case. On January 30th, 2023, District Coordinator Larry Lockey met with Ware County School Police Chief Danny Christmas. Chief Christmas allegedly stated he found his officer did nothing wrong. Mr. Lockey asked him, "Did he see the tape?" And he said, "Yes, but it had no sound." Mr. Lockey allegedly stated that his video had sound. He then asked Chief Christmas, "Did he have something to play it on?" Chief Christmas stated, "No." Chief Danny Christmas's refusal to hear the truth and his very inattentiveness proves he did not investigate this incident. Click the link below to see the complaint filed with the Ware County Superintendent and Ware County School Board members. Five. Ware County Learning Center Resource Officer Kevin H. Parton was fired from the Sylvester, Georgia Police Department for a sexual harassment complaint. See about Parton's records and click the link below. Six.
Good to see you.
Okay.
She tried to call her to come pick up her daughter. She's gonna come up here mad, try to snatch the door open, go on her ass, and me went out the door, tried to get her, come back, and she both just flipped out and in. And then, friend said, "I got something for y'all."
Well, one night my kid is in the car, gotta get her home. I'm not from here. She my taxes Florida.
Can't come up here showing up. I didn't just.
And I apologize and I understand that, sir.
So, does she get what now?
I did not put my hands on anybody.
I got something for y'all.
All I said was, "I'm gonna call the NAACP and he handcuffed me. That's it.
No, her handcuffs told you threatened us.
Because I said, "I got something for you guys. I'm gonna call the NAACP," and this is what happened.
She wouldn't turn around, put her hands where she jerked away from it, and then run to the car, and I run after and could cuff her.
My daughter is right here. She could tell you everything. Look, it is, and she's in the car. Like, how am I gonna get my kid home now?
You wanna hear Dr. Nash about it?
Yeah.
Then I had two or three other cases this morning. We got nine up in the house.
You got a case. Sit her in the back air for right now.
I have to get my kid home. I'm gonna let it get my mom. Look at my bag. I'm not even gonna.
What's going on?
It's been a while, morning buddy. It's been a while, morning.
I'm not starting anything. I didn't do anything. She came at me, and so I was talking.
Hold on, you don't just walk out.
I didn't do anything.
Go.
But I didn't do anything. Don't give a fuck, bro. Shut up.
Hey, 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 you listen to me. Now, you fixing to go to, uh...
Yeah.
Are you wanting to go back to RYDC?
You kicked three, you suspended five people for shit they did not do.
But unfortunately, no one will help. I'm sorry.
This lady, she got here, she was pissed on the phone. Told me she was coming. I said, "Okay, I need you to come pick her up because she needs to go home." So, when she got here, she kind of beat on the door. I opened the door, and she immediately began, "Which one of these so-and-so?" I said, "Ma'am, you're not coming in my building. Go." She stood there like she was gonna come in. I said, "Ma'am, you're not coming in the building." And then, as she walked off, she said, "That's okay. I got something for y'all. I'll take care of that," or something to the, some sort of a threatening remark. And at that point, Kevin said, "Nope, we're not gonna have any threat in the neighborhood." And, uh, he detained her.
I tried to cover back here, just stashed away and come up to the car, and I got something.
How old's the girl?
She's sixteen.
You got driver's license?
I don't think she does yet.
You, uh, make sure, uh, the aunt can come get her. It's okay for the aunt to drive her car? If not, we'll, aunt can come get her and we'll tow the damn car.
Yep.
Not gonna act like a fool in our school.
I told her, I said, "You know, how am I supposed to, how am I supposed to educate this child now?" She showed her ass out here like that, you know? She just gonna be a problem every day now.
Have we got her? We got some. You gotta charge them.
I charged her. She's off charging.
Hey, who's the aunt? She's saying there's no aunt around me.
Babe, my auntie Kaye, hell, it's only my person we don't get that safe. Why you ain't got that, hell, yet? We ain't out of the house.
Hmm?
I've got some more that parents have to come pick up. We'll see.
There you go. So, what's the deal with the auntie on that counter?
Hey, ya lady.
Who, who, what aunt?
I'm trying to come get me. Hello? Mommy, you come get me? I'm at this school, bro. They just arrested my mommy.
I ain't got nothing for her.
Was you, you may have to try to recharge again. Do I know?
Put it back on there, so I go back there again.
Yeah, I guess. Hold up, lemme sit. Lemme sit. Has it worked?
Yep. Usually, just hold the black button down. It's.
Yeah, you hold it for three seconds, it comes on, but you can't even power it on.
Ain't done nothing.
I have a hard time when I'm on this recording.
No, we got her information.
I don't have anything on her. She's probably got her name in the system.
Are you, I mean, you've arrested her, you searched her vehicle for a driver's license or whatever?
Yeah, I didn't hear a lady step off. Hey, let me get some stuff off.
You know the driver's license? Is this your car or hers?
Your.
Yours or hers?
Don't open that door.
I'm not even touching the bar. I ain't doing that.
She got her wallet on her?
Yeah, I suspend somebody every day of the day still.
Yeah, that's what he's been telling.
Every day, man.
Start putting charges on them for disrupting school.
Well, Kevin's encouraged me to do it, but I got too big a horn.
I know it.
I know.
That's the only way to. She, huh?
She got it.
Hey. Uh, Kevin called us over the radio from alternative school, said he needed assistance. Um, got here, he, uh, he's got a mother under arrest. We're on transport. She come out here to pick up her daughter and was throwing her ass. Um, Kevin and Dr. Nash said she made a threat as she was walking off. So, Kevin went to detain her, and she obstructed him from doing so. Um, so, got misdemeanor terrorist threat and, uh, obstruction officer. Yes. So, so we got her in back of Kenlaw's patrol car, and we are, um, trying to get somebody to come get the daughter now in the mom's vehicle. If nobody come get it, I guess we tow the vehicle. I just letting you know. Okay. All right, bye. How you say it, temple? You got, what's her name?
Jones, Latosca Louise Jones. He got her license.
Oh, okay. So, you'll have to go get a warrant on her? So, what you got, misdemeanor terrorist threat?
Terrorist threat and, uh, misdemeanor obstruction.
She didn't like threaten to specifically kill you or blow you up or nothing like that. So, it'd be a misdemeanor terrorist threat? Awesome. And a disruption of public school?
Kevin was pretty good, believe it or not. He really did. He moved better than I thought he was going. He was, he was from the door to the car where she was at.
Hey, uh, text that driver's license to the chief, so he just say, he wanna know who it was.
That dude right there got all kinds of jobs, man. Fixing buses, driving buses, working forty hours a month, overtime or more. If you ever need to borrow money, I probably got a call.
I'll get a paycheck on the way through.
It's over, man. Money in the world. Oh, no. He ain't even go to there. He just go to the bank.
I got a dog, he's watching. Nah, I'm good. Yep. All right, thank you. Number twenty-two.
Yes, the Gator.
Now, she got somebody coming?
I have a parent who, uh, requested for, um, the referral.
You got driver's.
Hong Yang. Where that the Gator there? Yes, sir.
Now, see it on the phone. I'm not mama, too. You trying to get me. They just locked up mama. Well, I wonder who she refers to as mama.
I don't know. Probably good for now. I might shoot for you.
Yeah, let's see what she got up there.
What is it?
Say, ain't nobody coming.
Where she live at?
Where you up at? Peachwood, Peachwood. Next time we get the car, somebody drive. I can't, can't really leave the car here. Someone's gonna drive the car.
Now, she got someone?
Somebody supposed to come get her, but not the car. They gonna come back here and come get the car.
Need to make sure. We taking her to the Ware County Jail?
I got an Aunt Green and an Aunt Benson. Well, they, they all got Florida numbers. Who is she?
Madeline.
Madeline? Where she from, coming from?
From Peachwood.
They come from Peachwood to pick her up?
They live in Peachwood.
Yeah, they do, right?
Right.
So, she got a lady, ain't Madeline coming to pick her up?
No, that's not my mother.
Okay.
She had told me this lady wasn't coming. Said somebody's coming to get her, but. Actually, they go to jail or?
Sounds like it. Me, she made a threat and was obstructing, right? I mean, confident with that?
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, Nash, Nash said she made a threat. She had something for y'all, and. And she, sounded like she was, sounded like she was borderline, uh, disorderly when she walked in the door anyway.
Yeah, she's already mad. She got come up, so she's gonna try to pull it over.
Oh, yeah, she banged on it and snatched on it.
All them kids right there tried, I told them.
Acting in a.
Oh, yeah.
Loud and boisterous manner.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
Any cuss words slung or?
I ain't about cuss words.
No, I, it happened all, the only, I do, she, she said, "I'll fix y'all. I'll come back. I'll, I'll take care of y'all." Yeah, I got something for you.
Okay. So, y'all took that as a threat, right?
Heck, yeah.
That's exactly what it sounded like.
Okay.
Now, after he grabbed her to put her handcuffed, she said, "No, I wasn't threatening her." And he said, "Yes, ma'am, I was." She said, "No, I was talking about the NAACP." Well, that didn't come out of her mouth until handcuffed.
Right. Sounded like there is threatening.
Then, once she got puffed, I let her have it. I, I treated her like she was a child. I said, I told her flat out, I said, "You are an embarrassment. As a parent, you should be ashamed of yourself for the way you behave." I lectured her after. I looked like she was a kid. I probably shouldn't now, but I did.
She says not a thankful Phyllis to come get her, pray, and to make the penny fall.
Do what now?
She called Phyllis.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh.
Which is a friend of the mom.
Okay.
That lives. But she is saying that she don't want Phyllis to come get her child or her car.
Okay. So we'll transport her child to the house and tow her vehicle then?
Yeah. Um, we're not gonna keep playing this game with her.
I mean, she's not getting out of jail just 'cause she don't wanna...
No.
Is she yelling? Is that her yelling?
Yeah, she's yelling.
So, you know, she told me she was at work, that's why she couldn't come and get her. I said, ma'am, it's imperative that somebody come and get her. She don't know how she's been at work, man?
So how you wanna do this? We go ahead and transport her?
Yeah, we'll transport her.
And get her and take her home?
Yeah.
'Cause it need to be two people in that vehicle, not a female.
'Cause I don't trust them to say.
No, sir. No, sir. I tell them all the time.
Yeah, we'll transport her and come back, take the girl home. She's sixteen, she stayed by herself?
Yeah, she's sixteen. The record, come get the car, I guess?
Yeah.
Do we need to pull it over and grab her, just leave her right there running? It don't matter to me.
I mean, you can turn it off.
Ain't nothing coming until eleven-twenty.
Then leave her there, she's gonna go and she's setting side of the door till they get back.
Tell her if she can't act that long, we waiting on us to come back, if she can get a charge too, we'll send her arrested.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That part of your test will get back.
Sure. Yeah, weird place, this thing's very well may need to be used.
That's why I wear a toupee.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, we gonna take that, then we right back.
Well? I don't know anybody to call. How am I gonna get out of jail? What's gonna happen to my kid? What's gonna happen to me?
What's gonna never happen now, is you get ready to be transported to the Ware County Jail.
Oh, my God.
Since you wouldn't give permission for the lady to get your car, you're, uh, we gonna come back, take your child home, and a tow truck's gonna come.
No, 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 no. She can come and get my car. Please call somebody to get my car. Do not, I don't have money. I don't live here, that's what I'm telling you. I just moved here. I don't know nobody.
Well, ma'am, that's what I just asked. She wasn't okay for it to get the car. And I told you, and I told you, if they don't, if you don't have it, the one they gonna tow the vehicle.
Let me talk to my baby. I gotta tell her who to call.
Your baby had called Phyllis. Phyllis was on her way to pick her up.
Call Phyllis back. If Phyllis gonna come and get her, please call Phyllis back.
They will.
What's Kevin's number?
How am I gonna get out of jail? How am I gonna get out of jail? I don't know nobody.
Hey, Kevin, step back outside for a minute. Yeah, I'll go, I'll go tell. Oh, was, was Phyllis coming?
Uh, what she said?
My mother, when we told her we was fixing to tow the car, she said...
Is Phyllis coming? I need to know 'cause we gonna tow the car, your mom's still out here. Did she tell you she was coming? Huh? She don't know.
I don't understand why we have to kick that in here.
My mother changed her mind, said Phyllis could come get the car and her child.
So is she coming or not? Say she's coming.
Oh.
But she's coming.
'Cause she said she coming, didn't, didn't wanna have to pay to get it, uh, out of the impound.
Yes.
Phyllis is, I guess...
I guess is on the way.
We'll stop back by when we get...
I thought mom didn't want her to take it?
Oh, when we told her we fixing to tow it, oh, she didn't wanna pay the impound fee.
Oh, so she changed.
I ain't got the money to pay the impound fee, Phyllis can come get it.
Okay.
And the child. Hey.
Is she still, man?
Nah, she's still.
Appreciate the help, man.
What we here for.
Sorry you hadn't come, but I appreciate you coming.
I saw it.
I am too. I am too.
We'll be back. Daughter said Phyllis is supposed to be on the way. Uh, you'll have to go before a judge in the morning, you'll have to set a bond. Tired and loud.
Huh?
You got a, you're tired, Rover.
Sound like you got some doggone old train vehicles on the road somewhere.
Yeah. Something's out of line or something.
I had to be there to try to assist to my nephew.
What are you more of them?
About two thousand. Two thousand. Two hundred and fifty dollars today. Two thousand ten, L-150, two hundred and twenty thousand miles, new motor, new tires. Yeah, it's high mining. Yeah.
We're home.
One for sixteen, we're negotiating.
We're home.
You got a wheelbarrow or something going out?
Ain't everything going out in this car, but there's nothing wrong with it.
We're home.
Right. I ain't turning out.
My wife's just back in my phone.
We have her right here.
We gonna put her in your property at the jail.
The guy that fit some boatloaders.
In the house or something? Might have me wearing a little ball case or something.
Money got, gotta be pretty deep, man, 'cause I've never seen it really drop low.
This one right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know who that belongs to.
He's that dude hat on his body camera, right?
There's cameras out there that recording the whole thing.
Everything was heard, but I seen, because at the moment I seen, I have something for you, I'm calling AAACP, this is what happened. And I just wanna make sure that it was recorded and everything was recorded. Of course, the footage just disappeared by the time I bring it.
Now, ma'am, don't forget, now you yourself did say, you let your anger get the best of you.
Saying the AAACP is, 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 is causing me to...
No, I'm saying you the one who was saying your anger got the best of you.
Yeah, my anger did, and I apologize for letting my anger get the best of me. But at that moment, I was upset and I did apologize. But at, I was at my car. He came to my car and he cuffed me when I said that. I was walking away from him and he had his hand on his taser. You told me to leave the premises. I'm walking away from my car. I have every right to say what I wanna say when I'm walking away.
I'm not saying you don't. I, I don't know what happened. I wasn't there.
Well, if you look at the footage, it'll tell you what happened.
Man, don't take no stuff down. I had a bunch of Judd I got up, gathered up.
Mm-hmm.
Probably.
They high now or something?
Half a doggone pickup truck load. Man, I get there, I done done that job. Well, would've cost me five dollars. Five to ten dollars in Homerville, cost me thirty-something dollars, man.
Now, see, it used to be like fourteen bucks for a truckload, like, you know, just, if you went out there...
High in Homerville, you got a truck bed load, ten dollars.
If you went out there with one thing, or if you went out there with a whole truck bed stacked up, like, it was just like fourteen bucks.
Nah, so I mean, thirty something.
Twelve, twelve or fourteen bucks, something like that, 'cause I'm...
A whole truck load in Homerville ain't gonna cost you no more than ten dollars. So I was like, shit. Now, for stuff like debris, like wood and tree trim, there ain't nothing, really, they charge a few bucks for that. They gonna recycle that anyway.
Oh, yeah.
Brother.
Brother. I recycle my own tree trim. You gotta sit here. Have a seat right there on the black bench.